I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for each one that is here. We ask that you give us all safe travel in the weather that we have tonight. We ask that we be able to accomplish many things for the city tonight. All these things we pray, don't we?
Welcome our guest of districts tonight, and we'll move right along with a consideration to approve the agenda. Have a motion? Have a second?
I'd like to remove Agenda 9A. I've talked with Mr. Hurka, and she and I will be working on a proposal to present at a later date to council. That's 9A under new business. I'd also like to make a request of Mr. Rush to remove Items F and G under new business, and to move H to the work session on February 7.
Yes.
I, in response to Mr. Cummins, I was going to suggest this anyway, is to move Item F to the work session.
Wait a minute now, item?
New business, Item F.
New business?
9F.
Yep.
Okay.
Move that to the work session.
Move to work session.
Right. Other than that, nothing?
No other changes. Anything else?
Mr. Brown, I'd like to add some more to the new business.
Okay. You want files on real quick?
No.
That's the council who's due.
Under the present policy, you can not vote right. So I was going to suggest, from the way you've had travel policy, to allow the other vehicles to go.
Under the travel policy. Okay, what I guess you need, you want to amend the agenda to bring up a discussion about the travel policy.
Yeah.
Okay, and that would be under old business.
What council want to do?
Okay. Council introduced items.
It'd be short.
Travel policy. I hope Susan, you're keeping up with all this. Anything else?
What was the motion that Mr. Cummins played?
I just removed A and asked Mr. Rush to remove F and G and discuss it at a work session, and he has, if I'm correct, Sammy, you corrected, he's just moved F to a work session, and he wants to keep G and H on the agenda. Is that right?
That's right.
And Mr. Huffman, we make that almost once under?
Council introduced items, I just wanted to have a discussion on meeting format.
So you just had to dumb that?
Non-voting, just for discussion.
Meeting format.
Mr. Brown, I don't want to complicate things, but? Would the state have designed, would the council prefer to have that under consent, or do you still want it as a separate amendment?
I don't think, I don't think matters really, to be honest with you.
No.
Yeah, it's just complicated. Okay, anything else? Susan, you want to tell us what we're voting on now?
Uh, Mr. Cummins moved to remove Item 9A.
Right.
And, um, Mr. Rush agreed to remove Item 9F to the next work session on February 2nd. And Mr. Huffman wanted to add to new business travel policy, but I think that's going to go under council introduce, as well as Mr. Bryan's council, uh, under council introduce, will be the meeting format.
Okay. That's it, right? Anything else? Have a motion to approve, or have that handled. So anyway, we got a second. Any other discussions? If not, those in favor signify the same eye. I oppose no. I'll make a motion. Ten-minute public input period, we have three names, TJ Cochran.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's TJ Cochran. I'm a resident of the city, living at, off Prominence Point Parkway in Holyoke Village. Um, I wanted to talk to you tonight about the Office of Economic Development. Um, I had the pleasure of being able to attend the economic development training with several council members last Wednesday, and I have to say that it was a really, really good meeting. Uh, we have a lot of great resources available to us through Cherokee County's Office of Economic Development, and Missy Martin, who is the director of that department, does, from what we could tell, an amazing job. She's a great resource. Um, one thing that I thought was great coming out of that is we can still leverage her and her contacts and her, um, strong standing with state organizations for economic development as a partner for the City of Canton, and I think that's great. One thing that we did discover, though, is there's still going to be some gaps in what she's able to do for us at the city, and so having our own economic development director, I think, is a great idea. Having somebody who can, you know, work for the city in partnership with Missy and her team is going to be a great idea. In that, there's a couple of things that I personally would like for the council to consider while you're thinking about this economic development position. Um, one of those is to identify and promote a clear, comprehensive vision for the city. Uh, having a very clear, comprehensive plan for where you would like for economic development and where you would like the city to go. I'd like to see that kind of in writing and put forth to help everyone involved know where we headed, where we going, and how we're going to get there. Um, and then that would allow the economic development director and the Main Street director to have some, some vision as to where they're going, and it'll help guide them a lot easier. Not to mention, it'll make your meetings a lot easier, because if something doesn't fit in that vision, it just doesn't happen, and you don't have to talk about it at length. So it makes things a lot faster for you as well, because you have a clear idea of where everything's going as well. Uh, the second thing is to identify and promote a clear, comprehensive economic development plan. Now, this is part of that overall vision, but where do you want things to go economically? What areas do you want this person to identify and work with so that they know where they're going and what they're doing, because that's, again, going to help them know where to go and how to get there. The final thing, and those of you who were with me at the training last week will know this, we heard it from every single speaker, and that is to think about how you're presenting the city to the public. Uh, one of the things that they talked about was businesses who are thinking about relocating into the city will send representatives to the meeting of city council to sit and listen to how you all interact with one another. And it's very important that a professional appearance is given to the public and to these potential businesses, because if they see arguing, people not getting along, issues on council, they may not come here. And that's going to detract businesses from being able to relocate into the city. And so as part of that economic development process, you've really got to think about what perception you're giving off to the public as well. It was a great meeting. I thank you for inviting me and allowing me to attend and to continue working on this plan for economic development. I think it's a great thing for the city. I think that, in coordination with the Main Street program, will be a great way to get things rolling and continue moving along in that process. So, uh, good work on that. Keep working on it. Thank you.
That go?
Good evening, gentlemen and Susan. Um, I also want to say, I think it's wonderful that council is considering and does intend to reestablish the offer of economic, the Office of Economic Director. Of course, I'm sure most of you do know, we did have an economic director, um, a few years ago. That position was terminated, but I think as long as you have the right person on board, it'll be a wonderful addition to the City of Canton. First of my thoughts, I would like to begin by thanking Mayor Hobgood and council for the opportunities I've had over the last few years to serve in a volunteer capacity on Canton Main Street, I mean, on Canton Charism Incorporated, and as the representative of Canton Tourism on the Main Street Board. It has been my distinct honor to assist in activities and programs which have promoted Canton as a place to live, work, and play. While we have not had the pleasure of seeing some of you at these events, I hope that you've been proud of the accomplishments made by Ginger Gerard, our executive director, and our board as a whole. The positive feedback we've received from visitors and downtown business owners has been gratifying. We continue to receive that very positive feedback. I understand that many of us who have served on these committees will be replaced soon, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge the honor afforded me. New volunteers with fresh ideas are a very good thing. I'm certain that much thought has taken place when deciding who should sit on the various city committees and authorities, and I respect the process. I'm certain that council has been careful to follow the bylaws of Main Street Board in particular while appointing replacements. It would be a shame to put the program itself in jeopardy by ignoring these bylaws, and they are very strict about who should be appointed to the committee. Secondly, I have read the agenda for this evening, at least the agenda before it was changed, and the accompanying attachments. While I have a great deal of respect for the office of each, that each of you holds, I am dubious about some of your individual and group actions. It would seem obvious, when studying some of the agenda items on the agenda for this evening, that you still plot your moves behind closed doors, possibly over the phone, by email, but away from the public eye, to be sure. This bothers me and begs ethical questions at the very least. I remain at a loss to explain why you voted to affine the Canton Charter with the proposed changes a few short months ago, and now propose sweeping changes to that charter, changes that former Governor Roy Barnes warned you two weeks ago were illegal and would put you personally at risk of legal action. I, for one, would be greatly angered should my tax dollars have to be spent on legal fees due to your actions this evening or at a future meeting. Lastly, to Mr. Beresford, who, um, proposed the couth and decorum, um, changes, I want to respectfully ask you to refrain from telling me I cannot applaud a speaker at the podium. The last meeting, you got very close to me. I would say you got in my face, and you told me not to applaud for a speaker at a city council meeting. Applause can be a form of speech, used in place of the spoken word, and should be considered a form of free speech. My right to the expression of free speech will not be silenced by any intimidation, and I will?
Hello, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Dyer, special guests, and neighbors. I wanted to speak for a few minutes on a couple of issues that I've thought about over the last couple of days. Uh, Mr. Mayor, there was a comment made last session about, by Mr. Beresford, about an email that you had sent out on City Letterhead. And so, due to open records request, I requested all the emails from Mr. Beresford's account, and I have found two things. First, our open records request, uh, system is broken, uh, and secondly, I believe that Mr. Beresford was? On a letterhead, when in fact you did not, that was sent to him, um, you sent it on your personal email. It was sent to him by Mr. Fincher, um, and what he was looking, what Mr. Beresford was looking at was his email. And any city email that you open will have the city emblem on the top, and so he basically just printed that, and that's what he saw. So I just wanted to make that clear, that this was not sent out on a letterhead, this was sent out on your personal email. Secondly, is the fire referendum. Uh, over the next couple of months, through March, we will be working, the city council will be working to pass the fire referendum. I will be working twice as hard, um, and many citizens of Canton will be working twice as hard to fail this referendum. Uh, it's not because we don't believe that Canton needs additional fire stations. I think we all think that we do. But I think it lacks vision, and it lacks, I think, what, the findings for where, I think that $6 million is a hard number. I recently met with, uh, Mr. Bryan, and, uh, there is no vision. $6 million is something you pulled out of your tails. Um, and just like the reservoir, we're going to get 16, 26, $36 million down the road and still pay for it and still have fire trucks. So I want to know if the land ready for use, and who made this land ready for use, as it's been surveyed. I want to know where the blueprints are for these fire stations. Mr. Bryan informed me that they had standard blueprints for standard fire stations. What's a standard fire station? The garage doors are open? Uh, there is no standard fire station. They all look different. Um, and I want to know what the, uh, proposed, uh, changes for the updates, the downtown fire, uh, station will be. And I want a hard number. I know that the fire chief has been working on it, and all due respect, um, you wouldn't send someone working in McDonald's at the fire station to do the books for a major corporation. I think the fire chief is a great firefighter, but I believe it's going to take some builders and architects to come up with the blueprint and a hard number to move forward with the fire referendum, and until we have that, I cannot support that. Um, medium format, I know that we were looking at, or you were looking at, Mr. Mayor and the council, of changing this format to eliminate the working session. I would like to know why. I think the working session is good. I believe it allows for public input. I believe it allows for debate among the many members of council. And I believe this is, uh, and it needs to maintain itself as a deliberative body, even when that deliberation is negative. Um, I also think that economic development, uh, position is a good thing. I think there are things that were said at this conference, uh, that were, uh, raised some questions on the viability of, of any city having an economic development position, and whether the state chambers believes that, uh, any city can successfully achieve this. Um, this is just the means to an end. I believe the end is that we all want to see Canton move forward in the direction. Um, and I believe that we can accomplish this, but I would like to see some very clear objectives for this position. And I would like to also see an evaluation, how we evaluate this position, this person in this position, and I hope that the city manager, who I have full confidence in in this, will come up with that plan. I'm almost done. Uh, the, under the agenda numbered, uh, under new business, uh, we have F, G, and H, posed by Mr. Councilman Rush. Uh, I would like to know the motivations for proposing these amendments. Um, I believe that a charter amendment is just as sacred as the 27 amendments to the Constitution. Uh, the Constitution was adopted in 1778, and, or 1776, ratified in 1778, and 1779 was the first amendment to the Constitution, actually, the first 10, called the Bill of Rights. And since then, we've only had 27 to pass. It's that precious. And I believe that we should instill this same value into our charter, and I believe that, I would like to know, again, the motivations, and I believe this is kind of silly, that we are continuing to change the charter in the same year now, five times. Re-election. I have heard from Councilman Bryan that he's not running for reelection. Some can be, uh, some can be relieved. Uh, I will reserve my opinion. Um, but what I believe is, and I told Mr. Bryan this in the meeting that we had, is, uh, those of you who are not running for reelection this year can leave two ways. You can leave with your head held high, or you can leave with a swift kick. I believe that you know that you're not going to get reelected, and that's why you're not running. So you may say you're quitting, but we are forcing you out here. There is no?
Point of order. I mean, he is not allowed to make derogatory comments to a councilperson from the public forum. I think that's?
The point of order is a blanket policy? It's not, it's not a procedure. I believe it is a procedure.
Speaking in general terms about?
Actually, use my name.
Yeah, well, just don't use names in individuals, speaking in general.
I spoke with Mr. Bryan, and I'm speaking in general, um, to the council, based on a conference or on the conversation I was having with Mr. Bryan. Um, and I gave him the same, and I give everyone the same, um, suggestion that I give Mr. Bryan. So I'm speaking in general terms, although Mr. Bryan and I had a private conversation.
Dean, let's just let him go. I think it'll be pretty much self-explanatory, and if you'll stay for the entire meeting, I think a lot of your questions will be answered.
And actually, I'm done, so I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have a consideration to approve the council, uh, minutes from, uh, January 3rd. Does there a motion to approve those minutes, or, okay, have a motion, have a second? Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
All members.
Approve the, uh, motion. Uh, under the consent agenda, I'll read those quickly, and if there's anyone that wants any of those moved off, let me know. Uh, approval of renewal contract for auction of city, of city assets with Jeff Doxson and Associates. Approval of ordinance to amend Canton code section 6.5C by removing incentives for bidding Sunday sales. Uh, and approval of city manager's appointment CFO, Nathan Ingram, as acting city manager. Uh, does any of those need to come off? If not, I'll have a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those no, I'll make a motion for the motion. Okay, under old business, this would be the, if there's, uh, if there is a motion, there would be the first vote to, uh, amendment of the Charter, Section 2.35J related to the mayor's staff, which basically would do what I understood was agreed to, at least initially, and now I'm not sure whether it was or not, so, uh, you know, what that would do was limit the mayor's office to one administrative assistant. Uh, this would be the first, uh, first vote or first reading as a charter amendment. Actually, when we get to the next one there, eliminating the funding, it's really, it's really kind of a moot point, to be honest with you, as to whatever you do. really kind of a moot point, just to be honest with you, as to whatever you do with A, since B would eliminate the funding for that position. So, is there a motion to approve, or A, first vote on amendment to Charter, section 2.35j, related to the mayor's staff?
Yes.
So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. Then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Goodman?
Please say the motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the amendment to Charter, section 235j.
Have a move and say aye.
Right. Well, now, this would allow for the staff restricted to one administrative assistant.
Still confusing, we need to go with the second one.
Well, the second one removes the funding. It's really a budget amendment. The first one is a charter amendment, which would allow for, would restrict it to only one administrative assistant. Right now, or previously to the last meeting, we, the mayor, had the authority to hire multiple staff there.
That's right, no?
Okay. Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Beresford?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
I don't think everybody understands what we're voting on yet, no.
Mr. Hudson?
I say yes.
Okay. So, what this does, this is the first vote. It will still require a second vote at the voting meeting in February. It's a charter amendment, okay? So, the... All right, item D is second, second reading and action on budget amendment to eliminate funding for the mayor's administrative staff. Mr. Bryan?
I would just make the motion that we continue to, in the path we're on, to completely eliminate the mayor's staff. So, my motion is to adopt the budget amendment to eliminate funding for the mayor's administrative assistant.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Now, what this does, is I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, it eliminates $33,000 as a budget amendment, is that correct?
Thirty-three thousand.
Is that not correct?
Rest of the...
Right.
That's the balance, whatever the number is for the balance of the year.
Okay. So, it's 33, is I believe what the meant budget amendment says, is that right, Nathan? Okay.
Well, now, we're not here, we're not here playing games, everybody clearly understands that the amendment eliminates the funding for the mayor's administrative assistant. I want to go on record saying that, that's what which discussion's been on along, and that's what the amendment is, and that's what the motion is, to completely stop funding the mayor's administrative assistant position. We're not eliminating the office of Main Street Director, that's already been transferred by default to go under the city manager. We are, this is simply the completion of removing any of the mayor's staff, and the only thing that's remaining is the funding for the administrative assistant. So, that number is for whatever's left to be paid out in the remainder of this fiscal year. Ms. Fowler's already been paid through today, and so, that sounds like about the right numbers. But just so everybody's clear on that, that's what we're doing.
I would ask the clerk to read the attachment that is with that item A to B, so that we're very clear on what we're voting on.
This is budget amendment number six, ordinance to amend budget for fiscal, for funding fiscal year 2013 expenditures, expenditures, excuse me, associated with function number 1310, mayor and staff assistant. Want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah, please.
Whereas the city of Canton adopted its budget for fiscal year 2013 on August 16, 2012, with an annual allocation of $51,984 for 100-1310-10-51100, salaries and wages. And the city council of Canton seeks to amend and otherwise modify said budget, and whereas the city council has approved an amendment to the city's budget on January 17, 2013, for the purpose of removing the funding needed to support the mayor's staff assistant for the remaining portion of fiscal year 2013, and whereas that approved amendment of the budget dictates that $33,000 be removed from budget line 100-1310-10-51100, salaries and wages, to 100-9057-579000, contingencies. Now therefore be ordained by the mayor and city council of Canton pursuant to their authority on this ninth day of January 2013.
Okay, any other questions?
A question for Mr. Dyer. Bobby, does that say what it's supposed to say? You know what the objection's on.
You wrote it, didn't you, Bobby?
No, I haven't.
You didn't write that? Okay.
It's just the budget amendment that follows the vote, so, I don't know how to answer your question, I mean, it's, if the question is the amount, Mr. Ingram can answer that, but it's just a question that follows the action, so I can't answer your question.
So, I guess my question is, does it clearly state that by voting tonight, we have completely eliminated funding for the position of assistant to the mayor? Is that what that says?
It says what it says, I, if that's the budget item that funds it, it does, yes. I don't know the answer to that, that's what you, Mr. Ingram.
Can we give Mr. Ingram, please, to clarify that that number's right?
$33,000, you said it was correct?
You did. Okay. That, that number is around the number of...
Sure.
On the... Yes, sir.
So, you're saying I might have $5 left in that salary budget? Is that what you're saying?
Unless you round it up.
Unless you round it up, okay.
I guess there's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Bryan.
Mr. Cummins?
Not to be a nifty...
Are we going to continue to pay her benefits throughout the year, additional pension benefits, et cetera, et cetera? Or, what is the intention of this council? Because the only thing that I see in this particular amendment is that we have eliminated paying her salary. So, if she voluntarily shows up, that means what? We're paying her health and insurance benefits under the normal, or what are we doing? I don't think that's been clarified in this particular motion and set of options, and that's the only thing I have to say.
I can tell you, the intent is to provide for her vested retirement, because we waited until this late date to do it, so she would be sure to have her five years in. There is no intent to continue to pay any other benefits or finances at all from the city of Canton to the position, because she'll no longer be employed here because of no money in the budget to pay her.
But, the only, the only thing that I'm bringing out, wouldn't it also be necessary to make a budget amendment to remove those and place them into the appropriate contingency account? Mr. Wood?
Honestly, I haven't calculated any of that, and I hate to defer to my colleague, but did your, I think the question is, did the number include the benefits, or is the salary on that thing?
No, that amendment was just salary, technically, yes, you want to remove the benefits and the health insurance debt that are...
Well, that's going to make another amendment, obviously. Then as a suggestion...
The salary, we're dealing with what we have here tonight, $33,000, plus or minus, off of, as a budget amendment.
Yes.
Then as a suggestion, because I'm sure this is going to pass, that the council, that we bring back a budget amendment and make sure that we're totally complete and correct in the economic fashion to handle the rest of it.
Do we have to, do we have to go through all this again, Mr. Dyer?
Is there, is there a separate item for a particular employee's health insurance?
Yes, there is a separate line item. This line item of 51, the account number, is stand read off as for salary and wages.
Now, Ms. Fowler's been here a little over five years. She's not taken, not one expense in insurance for this city. She never took the insurance at all. So, that's, that benefit is not that, whatever the others are, maybe.
But you have to be employed to get the benefits, so the company's just talking about cleaning up the budget.
That's exactly...
Because you're not entitled to the benefits if you're not...
Oh, right, that's perfect.
But she's not taking the benefits, not the insurance, she hasn't took the insurance, ever.
But your retirement benefit is based on your wages. If you're not getting wages, you don't get a retirement benefit. So, there may be some additional budget cleanup.
There will no longer be an expense for retirement by the other benefits.
Is there, are all of those things broken out by employee as a budget item, or is it grouped together?
Well, in this particular case, she is the only...
The mayor.
Yes, sir.
That makes it easier than that.
Mr. Bryan?
That's exactly right, I just, I'm just pointing out that we are leaving undone things that need to be cleaned up, in my opinion, that's all.
So, if I can be so bold as to ask you, after this vote, then will Ms. Fowler no longer be employed by the city of Canton? Is that what also was the result of this?
That's just a budget amendment, you have to understand.
The funding will not be there to compensate Ms. Fowler as an employee.
She won't get paid. Is that the question? I mean, that's what you've done. You've told Mr. Ingram not to write her any more checks. I don't have a question beyond that.
Thanks.
I might, I might answer your question. I think technically, the answer is there's no money to pay her salary. Legally, and Mr. Wood and I had talked about this at one point in time, I think legally that a personnel action is required in order to form, inform Ms. Fowler that she no longer has a position here.
You have to get a separation notice.
A separation notice has to be provided her. So, technically, all we are accomplishing tonight, in my viewpoint, is we are eliminating the funding for that position, but we have not completed the process of eliminating that position completely.
So, whose responsibility would that be, now that the mayor doesn't have any staff? Does she automatically go into the city manager?
No. No, 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 no.
The human resources usually sends a separation notice, so...
Human reso...
Well, you were delivering, yep. I mean, I don't know, I mean, what am y'all talking about?
If I were to fire somebody, human resource that does it without my signature? I don't think so.
They prepare the notice.
Oh, well, sure, they can prepare, I don't want to, yeah.
But, I mean, if I'm being asked a question at this point, I don't even know what...
You're saying they're talking about, here's what we're talking about. If we don't make this clear, Ms. Fowler's going to continue showing her work, because the mayor's not going to fire her or let her go, but the clarification needs to be made that she no longer works for the mayor.
If you didn't remove the staff, just the ability to hire.
So, see, we are, so I'm right, she's going to continue to show up for work.
But I guess that...
And not get paid?
Yes.
That's right, and not get paid.
But they did remove the mayor's ability to have the charter action, remove the ability of mayor employees or appoint a staff. So, if you're asking who would sign it, the city manager would sign it, I think.
I think it's...
Okay, well, wait, the city manager signs it.
Well, because you're in line to have appointed staff.
She doesn't work for you.
But she don't work for you either, they took away that part.
You know, I don't think so, I think they took away my ability to hire somebody, not, they didn't remove the staff.
All you're doing is saying...
They didn't remove the staff, and gendered all their votes. That's what you... Yeah, but I think we've gotten up there, there'd be more to say like this later on, honestly.
No, I think we need to clarify, we've got a motion on the floor, we need to...
If I may just say one last thing. I think the proper answer to your question is, human resources completes the form. We are instructing human resources, which reports to the city manager, to effectuate this termination. The mayor is obligated to determine the conditions under which the termination has occurred, because she was an employee of the mayor. I.e., is this a layoff, is this a elimination of the job, which is the case, or is this a termination for cause, or whatever the case? Because a form has to be completed and signed. I think the decision has been made, and our vote is final, she has no authority to report to work once the funds are no longer there. But we have a cleanup job to do in the personnel action. And that's, in my opinion, how it's done.
Well, the HR person must or should attend the conversation where the mayor or city manager, it should be done jointly, because the HR person is there to be responsible, that the right words are used, that the right questions are answered correctly. Because if you have a supervisor and employee, that question sometime that they may ask, the answer could be delivered that would be incorrect. I think you understand that, don't you?
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So, it's not one or the other, it's HR, her immediate supervisor.
Okay, I agree with that. Mr. Mayor, do you agree with that?
These aren't legal questions, these are practical questions about how the city operates. I don't really know how the city operates.
Mr. Bryan, I don't think so either.
Nobody else has...
This is not very, very well...
I wish that Mr. Cummings would have shared with other council members via phone or by actually sitting down with one or two at a time to bring forward the issue brought forward. I think you're absolutely right on, excellent point. My assumption, which is always a major mistake, was when you talk in the corporate world, you're talking salary, and salary also includes all benefits at the entire package. You never break it down, because you're bringing forward a cost, and that cost should not have been split down to a salary and/or do we have benefits. You're absolutely right. I think it's an excellent point. Shame that it wasn't brought forward versus us sitting here, looking like the normal, typical thing that everybody thinks we look like, clowns, trying to discuss an issue here.
That's one of the things I'm saying, I'm just trying to make sure that this is done proper. In government, there isn't any, and I'm not trying to say that I'm going to call you up and try and explain all this in a very difficult environment, this is a very complicated thing. First of all, the government has one requirement, that in corporations, we don't. When we discharge, I do not have to make a budget amendment. That is a requirement that's exclusive to this governmental, or not this particular government, entity, but to governmental entities. And all I did is notice that, look... And all I did is notice that, looking at it today, that we did not address that issue. I didn't notice it three weeks ago or everything. I looked at it today and I'm just trying to, knowing how you all are going to vote or having a very good idea, how you're going to vote, I'm just trying to make sure that we as a council do it in a proper fashion. That's all.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, I believe we have a motion and a second. Just a special with a second. Any other, any other discussion? Like I said, there will be more about this later, but right now, we will go ahead and vote. Mr. Goodman? Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Cummings?
No.
Mr. Bexman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Okay, all members voted for the motion with the exception of Mr. Cummings. All right, discussion and action on revised bond referendum.
If I could jump in a minute?
Yeah, sure.
I don't see it to end up really being the same thing. Because, and what you had put on your chairs was a revised resolution which included more detail that was suggested by a bond lawyer, giving us some flexibility, but also just putting language in that the bond people want. And then the notice of election.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of the City of Canton to call the fire referendum and to approve the notice of call for a special election, including the ballot language included in the notice. That's the two documents that we have.
Right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion? Mr. Cummings?
Two things that I noticed in the revision, since we've been through multiple reasons, I'm not sure I've got the right one here, but the one thing I noticed immediately was that our initial resolution that we discussed was at three point two five percent and all of a sudden, in this particular one, we got a not exceeding five and a half percent. And I really need an explanation as to how that jumped from three point two five to five and a half percent.
Mr. Mayor, that's what's addressed earlier. They have separate meetings, but if Mr. Wood, it probably is that or it's just a thing of one.
Nathan, you want to address that place?
Sir.
Thank you. It was under the advice of bond council and other financial advisors that we not tie our hands on the, on the idea that if it came back at three point three percent, just above that rate, that we would have inaction. So it was advised that we move that up to five point five percent, something a little more reasonable and acceptable with a range in it.
Okay, Mr. Cummings?
Followed question. Doesn't that give the people doing all of this bond working incentive to get a higher interest rate than we might give?
Usually fees, legal fees, underwriting fees, those are usually based as a percentage of the bond principal amount.
Okay, so they have no incentive as to what the interest rate is?
This, we're heading in the direction of a competitive bid, which means we put this out to underwriters and say, give us your best rates. So it would be, no.
Second question that I have is in the specific call. It says the acquisition design and or development of up to three. Why is the up to in there?
That was, that was my language from the very beginning. You know, that was just in case you wanted to build one, you're not required to build three if you don't want to. If you said three, you'd be tied to building three. That was just to provide some flexibility. That was my language.
But our intent is to build three, is that right?
Yes.
That was the only question that I had. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, why don't you just make a comment, I guess, just a positive comment. The issue of requiring the fire stations to be built in the city is very well, the need has been very well demonstrated. As we go throughout this campaign to get this passed, I think there will be any and all factual information available to anybody that wants it as far as how this six million dollar amount was robbed at, how the cost projections for the fire stations were robbed at for the equipment. But I think the most important thing that needs to be pointed out is that this council will be hopefully approving us to have this referendum out of respect for the taxpayers. We believe the taxpayers should have a voice and whether or not they are approving us to borrow more money because after all, they're the ones that have to pay it back. I think it's a historical day here in Canton that a council is allowing the taxpayers to do that. We could, just like councils have done in the past with the reservoir, the theater, the Y, other projects, this building, just approved it, be done with it, you know, instruct the effort to get out in the community, answer questions and allow the taxpayers to make this decision. So having said all that, I just would please encourage the media and the taxpayers to understand this and to get behind us because these are your fire stations, for your city, for your protection. And we thank enough of y'all to let you make the decision. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead. Earlier during the input session, there was some great comments talking about economic development. There's no secrets that fire protection for the families that may be moving in here as well as the businesses themselves. We'll definitely be looking at fire protection, not only the rates, but the protection they get, the actual protection they get. So for those people who are making positive comments about economic development, this is just one step in the vision of moving forward. Those who say this is not a good program, I question, I would have to question their vision as for the city. And any last? I would say several weeks ago, probably a couple of months ago, I sent an email to council members and saying that when it first came out, they had an estimate of eight million dollars, which included not only fire trucks, but other equipment as well. I certainly did not feel that it was appropriate at least in my mind at that point to finance fire trucks, which have, as I understand, around a ten-year economic life for twenty years and space the other equipment at the same time. We had a meeting, I had a meeting with Mr. Bryan, of course, and Mr. Beresford. And at that time, as of course, as we can see what's happened tonight, the agreement and understanding that we had that didn't pan out, so to speak, I had basically agreed to concede to go to six million dollars based on the agreement that we had, which was a three-part agreement. At this point, however, and I won't belabor the point, but basically at this point, I still find more than four million dollars as an excessive amount at this point. And here's why. We've got buildings, fire stations add up to about three point five million dollars. That's the real estate buildings, three point five out of six million dollars. The rest of that is fire trucks and cost of issuance. Now, if we finance one of the fire truck, or we finance the fire trucks, which are almost two million dollars, we finance two million dollars at three point five percent for twenty years, we're going to pay eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in interest plus or minus. If we finance them, if it were to go up to five point five, which if it came to that, we don't have a choice. We would have to do these at five point five. We don't get a choice because we're committing in that bond referendum that if the bonds are up to five point five, we will do this. And we should. But at five point five percent for twenty years, two million dollars, we would pay a million and three hundred thousand dollars, more or less, in interest on those fire trucks. My suggestion early on was that we do some other type of capital lease for a much shorter period of time. So while I certainly support up to four million dollars, it's because, you know, that's, we've been told several times, seven fifty, eight hundred thousand would build a fire station. If that were the case, you could build four stations for three point two million dollars, not six million dollars. But at any rate, that's the way I feel. I feel like the vehicles really shouldn't be in there if to finance those pieces of equipment that period of time. Mr. Mayor, could I ask you a question? Sure. You bring up a good point. My question would be, if we decide, if we go ahead and build the stations, but if we decided later that we would better work through a lease on the trucks as the building come on stream, we don't have to use the six million dollars, the total six million dollars. We would have sold six million dollars.
Well, you'd have to decide before you decided on, you could still obtain bonds less than six million. That's one of the changes the bond council wanted to do, is add language that made it clear that you could choose to issue less than six million dollars in bonds. This would just authorize you go up to six million.
Okay. Would that answer your question?
Well, what it would do is, I mean, you'd almost need to make that upfront because if not, you got to decide it before you sell. But you said almost. It either is or not.
Is or is not a lot. In other words, can we say under a program like you suggested, and we just used the four million for the building and we never used the extra two? I guess we could do that, but we'd have to do it before any of this was sold.
Yeah, there's no timing required of you after the election. Anytime after the election, you could decide how many you're going to sell. But yes, you would have to make it before you, before you actually borrow the money, you would decide how much you borrowed. And so the decision would be, we're only going to borrow four million or five million or three million or whatever. But the election would be about six million. The ballot is going to get.
So, and you were saying that we use the eight hundred, the thousand for interest and it's owned up to over a million dollars, but we don't know what the difference would be. I'm sure it beats that. No, I don't know. I do not know that. I'm just saying that's what we would be paying over twenty years, which my guess would be, it would be less on a shorter period of time, even if the interest rate were a little bit higher. So my suggestion would be is that in order to get on the March nineteenth referendum date, we could proceed with the six and in between here, that time, that we just better decide whether to follow your route with the trucks. Of course, who knows in ten years what the lease agreement might be, or even if you can get a lease, you might not even get a lease.
I think we need to be clear about your decision and what to deal with after the election. Because once the election's called, it's six million.
Okay, then we have plenty of time to make that decision. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I believe Bill had his hand up.
So to just further clarify the mechanics of the way this would work, say the six million was approved, that is up to borrow, borrowing up to six million. So we don't have to at all issue bonds for six million at one time or two million. The real way it's going to work, we're going to build a Laurel Canyon fire station first. The construction will start this year. We've already got the land owned and paid for. We've got the trucks owned and paid for for Laurel Canyon. So we're going to probably only need eight hundred thousand or so for Laurel Canyon this year. So if I'm understanding this correctly, we will only sell eight hundred thousand dollars of bonds, maybe a million dollars this year. Is that not right?
I think it can. I mean, the resolution says you can issue in series. So you could have the Laurel Canyon series of bonds. You could have the, there may be some time where you have to cut it off.
So when does our debt service start on that? I think it's 2015.
As soon as you borrow money. I mean, the next, I think it's 2015.
But it wouldn't start on the full six million because we hadn't borrowed it.
You may end up with different series of bonds and each one will start, like you have different payment schedules on all your other bonds.
So that does give us the flexibility of phasing the bonds in because this is going to be probably a three-year program. We'll start the marketplace station in probably the year fourteen. So then we could issue the bonds for the marketplace station if we wanted to phase it in that way. It's an option. Then we could issue the bonds for the station at the bluffs in phases. So we don't, the six million is just an up to. It's just a ceiling. We don't have to borrow six million. We don't have to issue six million. We may only end up doing four point five million. All that is, is giving us the flexibility that we need. And I think something else needs to be addressed and that's salaries to pay the firefighters. We all understand we cannot pay for salaries out of the bonds. There's going to have to be some type of a relatively small mileage rate increase. I think we all have mentioned that before. It's been talked about, but let's be upfront about it. That's going to have to happen as we pay these guys, bring them online. Hopefully with the economy improving, revenues improving, maybe we won't have to. But just so the public understands, that is a possibility that we'll have to look at towards the end of this fiscal year probably. So that's part of it. It's just trying to make it as clear as we can.
Mr. Cummings, do you have something?
Any other thing I was going to say is I saw it a little bit more as a five-year program than one of the things that we were looking at initially. And if we did take the all of twenty million, I'm sorry, all of the six million initially, all of the six million initially, we would probably have the ability to prepay that should we not use it all. And secondly, the acquisition of equipment isn't day one of the bonds. So even though the life cycle is ten years, we may only have some of that equipment for fourteen or fifteen years. So we're only stretching, we're only stretching that equipment to the extent of maybe four years beyond its normal usable cycle, life cycle, but I think as a city, we get a longer than normal life cycle. So that was the only point.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
Thank you.
Correct.
No, I don't think so. That's not what I intended. If I did, I apologize. We're talking about three fire stations, three new ones and the renovation of downtown.
Okay, that was missing.
But still, that's, I mentioned four fire stations, including that one. You could build four new ones for three point two million.
And then you refer back to this infamous conversation that you, Mr. Bryan and I had, striking agreements. And we came in with an eight million dollar proposal. You came forward with four. And after some dialogue and we looked at the various costs, eliminating a one point five million dollar training facility because we will be looking at utilizing those in the counties. So we were able to move this down from the eight to a six and you were able to justify it to your own liking, moving it up to, from a four to a six. But hinging on this deal was the issue of your assistant. And you looked at us and smiled and saying, I'll work with you guys to get this done. I'll support it one hundred percent to get this done, only if you come up with this fact, holding us hostage for your, I guess, holding us hostage for your assistant. I was kind of shocked to think that the mayor of the city would be saying a six million dollar bond referendum for service for the fire protection of this city is hinged upon us saying, yeah, we'll, would you keep your assistant? That's what it boiled down to. I was shocked enough that we
I was shocked enough that we had another conversation, and there was so many people there. I asked him point blank, "Are you holding us hostage?" He looked at me with a smile and said, "Yes, I am." I'm shocked. And I feel that in the interest of this city, we need to get this bond approved, not playing the games. And the agreement that I think we struck, and we tried to get back with you, but you said, due to the limited time, you couldn't see us on Wednesday before the council meeting, we weren't able to dialogue. And I got it. I don't check my emails every day, although some think I do, but I don't. And, you know, I didn't get the message, but the old phone still works, and if you were in that urgent need, I wish you had picked it up. But now we're down to a real tough situation here. We need your support to get this bond approved. You have a lot of pull, push, and energy in this city that we would really love to have you on the team. The council voted five to one to move ahead with this program. And I wish we could get you to say, "Yeah, I'll support it." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. Call it a question. Thanks. I already have a motion in a second. Those in favor, signify the same. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. I know this is a lot of aggravation for many of us here, and many people that watch what goes on, but there was a day, there was no conversation up here. Let me tell you. There was no conversation. And now, now there is. May not like some of it, but it's here, and we do discuss items back and forth, disagree, you know? Sometimes we get unrooted, you know that? But I can tell you, that's better than the alternative of pure silence and doing it at other times, and coming out and telling the public what you're gonna do.
I agree with you.
You're here. You're here.
I dislike it as much as the whole of it's here. But it is trans... it's transparent to folks, you're seeing it, you're seeing the real world.
All right. Yes?
Something I'd like to say is, from an earlier stroke of us not having plans that were drawn by architects and things of that nature, having our fire chief do everything, he should stick to drawing... stick to fighting fires, not drawing a plan. I would just say that he probably is just not fully informed, and it's probably our fault. But we... I've been on those committees for a number of years, we've had to... We know, we had architects draw those, we had architects draw our previous facilities that we have. We ask our chief to help out in that, around to see if we could cut costs a little bit and still build the facility we needed. He obliged us, we have found savings in doing that. There are lots of areas that you spoke about tonight that haven't been covered, that they've been done prior to your knowledge. So I would say, if you're interested in finding out more, I'd be glad to personally answer any questions you might have. I'm sure the mayor has some information too, as well. But, you know, we are glad to inform you. Again, but that information is available.
Thank you. Item E, second reading and action on stormwater budget amendment. Mr. Baersford?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we move ahead on this particular ordinance, ordinance to amend the budget for transferring $300,000 from stormwater contingency to the Cherokee County Board of Commissioners as a funding for the Etowah River Parks Stormwater issues.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the budget and then the transferring $300,000 from stormwater fund to contingency fund. No, I'm sorry. No, not the contingency, but the emergency to Cherokee County. Cherokee County, I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify the same. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion, except for Mr. Cummings. Item F, second reading and action on SPOS 6 Recreation Fund Amendment. Councilman Baersford?
Thank you, sir. Ordinance to amend the budget for funding for Etowah River recreational park approval amendment. The budget dictates that $118,151.99 be allocated for the budget item 321-900010579000, contingency to the 321-62204554120, site improvements for the Etowah River recreational park. Yes, sir, which number would you like?
Second.
That was a motion to approve by the Senate.
Yes.
A motion in a second to approve the spending of SPOS 6 money in the amount of roughly $118,000 plus...
And $0.99.
And $0.99 for the Etowah River Park. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify the same. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Item G, second reading and action on Canton Code 2-22, ordinance amendment regarding appointment of committees. Mr. Cummings?
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt Canton Code Section 2-22 ordinance amendment regarding the appointment of committees.
Do we have a second?
Sir?
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I have a question, I could address it, Mr. Cummings?
Sure.
It doesn't state in your attachment, you... What committees? Are those just council committees, or are those city committees?
That's council committees only, because the...
It needs to say council committees.
Well, it really don't... Because the others... The other ones that you're confused with are commissions and boards, boards and commissions. And I don't really think, like, it's the Main Street Board, or...
Well, I just... I mean, you're a wordsmith yourself, so let's put...
I think relative to it...
It does say that.
It does say...
All city council committees and committee chairs and all states...
Yeah, it's...
I'm sorry, I apologize.
But it is...
I don't know why I'm... I regret it.
Any answer?
Yes, I do have one other comment. I do feel like we need the approval of council. So that's about the only thing I would have to say, I think, with the approval of council meeting. That's not in there, but that's what the council wants, I'll go with.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say that I'm with Mr. Huffman. I would... I think this is a fine motion and ordinance, except that I would suggest that we bring this up to make it consistent with the way our citywide citizen committees are appointed. If that is... The mayor does submit the appointments to council, and then... So I think that would be in order here, so I would ask if you'd consider to amend that to... Or is it the... It would say this, except that the council would have the approval.
And it's the objection... I don't want to amend it, and here's the reason that I object to that logic. In the boards and the commissions, we are not appointing ourselves. And when a committee is formed, council committee, there are two things. Number one, the only authority it has is to make a recommendation. It has no authority to enact anything. And secondly, that point is, if we take and... I think that's a proper thing. If the council itself could make decisions, I would say that was a different viewpoint. But the most they can do is come back to this body with a recommendation.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I'd like to say about this, I can understand where some of the council is coming from in their thinking. And that is that, well, be perfectly honest, if someone ticks off the mayor, they don't get on a committee. And that's the way it's been, that's the way it is everywhere, that's the way the political game is played. It happens in Congress, it happens in Roswell, it happens everywhere. So I have no objection to the mayor appointing committees, because that should be one of the duties of the mayor. And I tend to agree with Mr. Cummings that we shouldn't be appointing ourselves to a committee. And if the mayor wants to appoint three people on a committee that share his viewpoint, they have to bring it back to council, and the full council has to decide. So I don't see anything... any reason why we should not let the mayor make the appointments.
Well, Mr. Rush, maybe I shed some light on that, is a... maybe... Is it... I think you're absolutely right in that that's the way politics works, that we have to agree with it. I would like to see this council, every member of this council, share the funds being on the committee. And, you know, committees take a lot of extra time out of our days, and I think it should be shared. Every one of us got some areas of expertise, and every one of us should be participating in politics. That shouldn't be an issue. Now, if we have a situation where a committee has three individuals that were sharing... sharing what they feel is best, or direction, and then it comes to council, and it gets voted down, we've wasted a lot of time. And some things, we don't need to be wasting time. So I think the committees should be seated with people with different opinions, so we get the best out of those committees. So when it does come to council, then we get a true picture of what should be done, rather than it gets voted down and we send it back to another committee. That's what happened with our fire committee twice.
Just one last point. I mean, the point is well taken that, you know, the mayor could have three that he prefers to have on a committee, but the concept is that he picks people who might have expertise in those areas. For example, you're heading up the pension committee. You've had experience in the insurance field, and in those areas. So to me, this prejudice could occur, this politics could occur, but it can also occur with the council selection. There could be a situation where you have five members of council that lean one way, and one member leaning the other way, and you'll have that same political situation. So it's best left with the traditional way, in my opinion, where the mayor appoints, since they're not making any final decision.
Mr. Cummings, Mr. Mayor, one final statement. Folks in the audience, Mr. Cummings and I, generally, generally, we tend to vote opposites, and that's fine. He's got his opinion, I got mine, but we are on a committee, the retirement committee together, and we work great.
That's true.
We work great. And we have sometimes very different opinions. And I think we're gonna come out of that with a good resolution that we can bring to this council.
Should I have one question?
Yes. And I should know the answer to this, but I don't. Committee meetings, are they public meetings where the public has been notified?
Absolutely, yes.
So therefore, any number of council members could attend and speak, whatever.
Record it. Everyone should be notified of meetings, public meetings, that kind of... I think that the question here that concerns me as much about this as anything is the fact that, in essence, the council would be appointing themselves. And I see that as sort of a problem, you'll be voting for yourself on a... for a committee. Maybe there's nothing wrong with it, it's certainly awkward, to say the least, but we vote for ourselves. And it's not like any of the other citizen committees or anything like that. I can't prove my... I bet you don't again, wasn't that... I don't know that I would. Okay, we have... I believe we have a motion in a second, and the... You want to restate your motion, Mr. Cummings?
My motion is that we adopt for Canton Code Section 2-22 ordinance amendment regarding the appointment of committees.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? If not, we will... Those in favor, signify the same. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Under new business, we removed A, so we're gonna B. Discussion acceptance of $63 qualifying fee for the November 2013 municipal election. Our clerk had indicated to us that the... I'm assuming that all we need to do is to adopt a resolution to that effect, which basically says that the qualifying fee for council members, which is what will be up in this year only, at the rate of $3 per thousand salary, so it would be $63. And I don't know, does it establish the date of the election?
No, this is just the qualifying...
The date is by law, the first, I guess, the first... Tuesday after the first Monday, November 2013.
It's supposed to determine the amount by February 4th.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify the same. Change order for ESI. We've talked about that a couple of times at a work session as well. Anybody have any comments, or do I have a motion?
I have a motion, I'd like to accept this.
I have a motion to approve, we have a second. Any others, discussion, or questions? If not, those in favor, signify the same. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. I'll see if I have a question. The item D, discussion of possible action on agreements, terminate 205 and 2007 agreements with Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority. I think we talked about that briefly in our work session with the State of Fair.
Where are we gonna delay?
We'll be out about that.
Get some more information?
I think we need a motion to do that.
I'd like to make the motion to postpone this until we've got the information from the city manager and can place it on the agenda for discussion and vote.
We have a motion, second. Any other discussion on that? If not, those in favor, signify the same. Those who oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, discussion of RFP for downtown parking analysis. Mr. Wood?
Two representatives of the city, two representatives of the county, and two or more representatives of the development authority have been meeting for the past several weeks to discuss various downtown issues. Coming out of those discussions in recent weeks, has been a suggestion that the city commission a professional objective analysis or assessment of our current parking inventory and potential, current needs, wayfinding, opportunities and improvements. A copy of the draft RFP was sent to council with this agenda on Friday of last week, and we simply want your concurrence before we send those RFPs out, or that RFP out, and obtain quotes and proposals from prospective firms that would provide that data for us.
Mr. Rush?
I have a question. In reading the RFP, it looks to me like it's a foregone conclusion that we're gonna go to the... to go to a parking deck. I mean, that's the way the RFP seems to be written, and I'm just wondering if a lot of this, if all of everything in here is necessary.
We can amend it as council sees it needs necessary. I would say we're about $2 million shy of a foregone conclusion for a parking deck. Yeah, I tend to agree with it. I was hoping that the overall results we would get with this was, number one, do we really have a problem, which I think most people believe we do? To what extent does that problem exist? And what are some recommendations to resolve, assuming we find a severe problem, what recommendations do they have there? You know, whatever it may be, including other vacant, perhaps vacant sites for parking. And there has been some discussion about that, and the meeting Mr. Wood was referring to.
Yes. As we try to start developing or continue developing, it might be better said, some futuristic plans or vision, or whatever we choose to call it, economic development, parking will be an issue, or is an issue. We've already heard from the county, Mr. Wood and I have been over to the school board, and there are concerns on all parties there, from our merchants downtown, to the school board, and to the county government with the Jones building, is what they can do with that. And that one structure, that one structure, is so key to our overall success for those who are interested in that, and just the downtown development. And parking continues to be an issue. If you're going to fill that building and you don't have parking spaces, who's going to take over, who's going to move in there? We need to start becoming a little bit more, thinking a little bit further out, so we can, somebody shows some interest, we can come in, talk to them, and give them answers then. They're not going to wait till six months later when we have a resolution on parking. Yeah, it might be a $2 million parking deck, but you know, if we have a $2 million parking, $2 million parking deck, that solves the problem, but we can get three intergovernmental, three governments to work, or to help share in that parking. And we're talking about a lot less than $2 million just on the city. So, I recommend that we accept, and we go out on an RFP for this.
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion? Did we already have a motion on this?
I don't think we did.
We do have a motion, we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But we have to be proactive and go ahead and do that. We've looked at several sites, Mr. Wood, by the way, and it's always been, well, we need to do this, we need to do that, but I think we've got to go ahead and take the step now, because the merchants are going to need us to have places to park, and people can be in there and be buying something from them.
Okay, Mr. Cummings?
I think the only thing that troubles me is the cart before the horse, or whatever it is, is we're trying to, we're trying to form an economic development group, which is going to develop a vision of where we think the economic development of the city is going to go, and at the same time, we're determining future parking requirements, and we haven't even developed where we're headed. I sort of, I sort of thought, when we first talked about a parking analysis, is to look at the limitations that we currently have, and then some sort of basic estimation of growth requirements, and that they would predict, and possible options where we could meet those growths. But until we form the economic development and its objectives and its goals and where we expect it to go, we're sort of, we're sort of thrown out to somebody to speculate what we're working on separately.
Mr. Rush, I think I wanted to correct, perhaps I gave a misrepresentation.
I'm for the study to find out, because we do have a parking problem downtown. It just seemed to me that we had a lot of hurgies, and it said, what do we need in the parking structure? But it does have all the other things that are, so I'm not opposed to this, I was just questioning the word.
There certainly is no intention to drive this study towards the construction of a parking deck. If you recall, and I don't know that it was identified as a parking deck, I can't say that word was used, Mr. Dyer, or somebody, structure, okay, is that the language? In the prior splot, the now, now, former splot, and of course, there were no funds at all expended for that purpose. We didn't get to the benchmark, to the ceiling, so we didn't violate the law or anything. But my point is that six or seven years ago, parking deck was discussed downtown. I can tell you from our discussions, I'm convinced that the county is very serious about, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the county, that would not, that would certainly be presumptuous, but I do believe the county is serious about improvements to the Jones building. They have their own issues which they're identifying and working through, but I do believe that they are trying to establish some prioritization for improvements to the Jones building. The school board, as we know, has the capability of a staff of 300, plus or minus employees downtown, that are currently not, not working out of the downtown area. So, what our purpose would be, is, would be to be sure that every entity, the Main Street Board, the merchants, city council members, the school board, property owners, who might not particularly be business owners, are interviewed and are given every opportunity to provide input into that analysis as it is conducted.
Mr. Mayor?
I appreciate what Mr. Wood just said, because that was touching on what I want to talk about, is that the school board has referred to the fact that they do need this parking. That's not part of our economic development, but it would be part of our economic development if they left the city. So, that's one issue. The county is another issue. Well, also, when you drive up here to City Hall, our police department has a limited place to park their cars. So, we've got to look at another entity here. And then we're looking at what's downtown, the merchants. So, there are a number of entities, and it doesn't impact what we want. Get the study done, will not hurt anything that we want to do with this new program, so, thank you.
One last comment, and just to play on Mr. Cummings' words, I'm afraid that the horse is almost out of the barn. And what I'm referring to is that the school system has approximately 30 employees down here. Dr. Featherson, he would like to see the city show some love. They're the county's largest employer, and they're the largest employer, and they would like to stay downtown. Do you realize what that could do for our city, if they came back downtown? Do you realize what that would be? It would be the biggest bonanza outside of Northside Hospital. We need to show some love and show some interest, and this is one issue they happen to have a common interest in. And if we can get next to them, we might be able to save that and bring some others down here. Actually, this economic downfall that we've been experiencing is a blessing. If a economy were growing, they would have been gone. They would have been gone. We still have an opportunity. Let me say something before you came on board, Mr. Huntley, we did have to show quite a little love to that school board. And prior to the bond referendum, we had several meetings with the superintendent and others with the school system, and I can tell you, we made a lot, we passed a resolution here in support of them staying downtown, not just asking them to stay downtown, but telling them that we would concede many, many things to keep them downtown. A lot of their costs that they may have, we could, we'd work with them on, and this sort of thing. Now, we did that based on their implied agreement that they were going to try to stay downtown to do that. Well, the bond referendum came and went, and we still haven't got a decision of if they're going to stay downtown or not. We need to, we sort of need to know that. Well, this is one way. If they decided, Mr. Mayor, if they decided to share some of this with us, it's just like fishing, you get the hook. Okay, you get the hook, and they've already got the plans for downtown. They've got, I was here when we did the resolution, I was in the audience, but resolutions, I mean, it's nice, but we've got to, we've got to do more than that. Here, I come from a sales background. Your best customer, you show them love, and a resolution is not love. That's what they ask for, so that's what they got. We've got to be more creative. That may be true. Another thing I would like to say is, how much, you know how much is in the bond referendum for a parking deck?
I have no idea.
I don't either. I think that's something we ought to know. They have to have parking with that proposed building, they have got to have funds in that bond referendum for proposed building. Perhaps some of that could be utilized in conjunction with other stuff that we have that we could all, as you say, all free work together. So, I just say there's a lot we don't know right now.
Just one comment, it's not about the parking, but it's about the love showing to the school district. A month or two ago, Mr. Beresford and I and Mr. Sims, we sat downstairs, we were talking about stormwater, and we talked about how the city, the school district could avoid paying, I think at the time I thought it was 60, I think, and Mr. Ingram said it's about $49,000 in stormwater funds by making some changes in their curriculum. And Mr. Sims said they would agree to do that, so, he said, and his comment at the meeting was, that's another teaching. So, I think we are trying to show some love.
That is showing some love, I say. We really got $49,000 a year on that.
Yeah, that's true. That came up in our discussion. So, if we took $50,000, and said, well, if you took $50,000 and you did it for 10 years, how much money would you have to go toward your parking deck, to solve your parking problem if you wanted to move down? You see how this thing deals?
Okay. So, where does that leave us?
Call for question.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor saying aye? Opposed, no? All members voted for the motion. Okay. We omitted, I believe, item F from the work session. Item G, discussion of proposed amendment to Canton City Charter, Section 2.36, Chief Executive Officer, Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was earlier commented by a citizen as to why this was on the agenda, and I can assure you there's no vendetta here. This is on the agenda because at the last meeting, former Governor Barnes brought it up, and he indicated that this section indicated that we have a strong mayor form of government. Well, he was correct, it does. Only thing he was incorrect in is the assumption that this section, as it is written, was approved by the legislature. It was not. It was passed under home rule, and under home rule, you're not allowed to change the form of government, so this section currently, as it is written, that says the mayor shall possess all the executive amendment, and the word is administrative power granted to the city under the Constitution. Tell me if I'm incorrect, that section is invalid because it was passed under home rule. All I'm trying to do is say, the mayor shall remain as chief executive of the city, and shall possess all the powers and duties expressed in Section 2.35 of the City Charter, which details the powers and duties of the mayor. And the reason that is because prior to that, just saying that the mayor is chief executive officer, but not defining it, leaves it an ambiguous term. That's the only reason. So, I would like to make the motion that we amend the charter accordingly.
This is for discussion purposes. I mean, we haven't, we haven't brought this up anything yet.
Then I make the suggestion we...
...is correct, that it was added under home rule in the 2005 charter. But, and here's the big but. The big but is, it only changed the government, form of government, if the government form preceding 2005 was council manager, and then this informed, in essence, changed it to strong mayor form. In discussions with Mr. Dyer, and he and I, I think, have the same opinion, we could almost say that the entire charter of 2005 is invalid, could be ruled invalid, because the whole thing should have gone to the legislature. In fact, I think you had a retreat that told you that particular point. Well, Mr. Dyer and I have talked about it, and it's conceivable that the entire charter of 2005 could be ruled invalid. And if it is, everything that we've done since, including the 2012 charter and everything else, hangs back to 2005. Most of us don't like it, I think it's a legitimate argument, Mr. Dyer and I have had that argument. I would like to keep, so that we are keeping consistent, I don't have a problem of dealing with the administrative powers contained in with this, I would like to keep the sentence as it is, and exclude the administrative powers that are specifically designated to the city manager, because he hasn't really got executive powers, he has administrative powers, and change the sentence to maintain the executive, because that goes all the way back to our first charter, that we, he is the chief executive, and if we do remove that, we are in essence changing somewhat the form of government. And where I would say is, we ought to look at, and just suggested, Mr. Rush, that we look at the rewording of this, because there is a contact, a conflict with the administrative powers between the mayor and the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I did say the mayor remains chief executive of the city, so I think...
Well, I was just rewording again.
No, it said, it says the mayor shall be chief executive of the city, and in parentheses is what I would like to remove and add the following sentence. But I want to ask Mr. Dyer a question, because Governor Barnes said that some portions of the charter may be invalid and some portions may be valid, so I would question the statement by Mr. Cummings that the whole charter is invalid. If some of that was passed under home rule, it's legitimate, correct? Or am I incorrect?
Do you want me to add a last?
Yes, I do.
I don't think you can adopt an entire charter by a home rule, but I think that's real questionable. Now, I think if we could, and I don't know what court would do, but you could break it out and say, well, you could have done that by home rule, and you could have done that by home rule, and you could have done that by home rule, so some things within there may be deemed valid. But you can't, I don't think you could adopt an entire charter.
I think that's what Governor Barnes said.
The question is where we left. If that's true, what have we got? What we've been operating under this charter, there are ways to put it all together, to make it all valid, make it all, ways to interpret it. This is a good example of one, Mr. Barnes was right, this is in a strong mayor form, you would see this statement, in a strong mayor form of government. We didn't have a strong mayor form of government before this, so it couldn't have been added by home rule, in my opinion. But you could interpret it where it's not, because it's leading over whatever administrative power is not specifically assigned to the city manager. And you could put them together, and it may not be a change... And you could put them together, and it may not be a change of form of government. I don't really know how to answer the question of all that.
It's so ambiguous. That's the problem.
Well, it's in direct conflict with the city manager part. Because then he has all the administrative power, and he gives some to the city manager.
Yeah, and I think that's where it should be. Because there may be.
Well, I think it does clarify in that it says the mayor shall possess all the powers and duties expressed in section 2.35, which specifically anoints the powers to the mayor's office. I mean, I'm not trying to change anything. I'm just trying to make this section valid and legal, and we can do this under home rule. So if we're going to defer this to the work session.
That's my problem. I think you can make a change this under home rule. Because I don't know what it is. If it was added by home rule, presumably exempted by home rule, but it may not be there.
Well, just leave it alone and not press.
Well, if we went back, I had Alstairdy speak with a previous mayor at least, and he just said to me any number of times that a previous council told him that he is not a strong mayor. He said, okay, I heard that term, that told me so many times. I've got tired of hearing it. But that was previous.
You mean by the legal counsel?
Legal, yeah, by a legal counsel. It was Mr. Page.
Well, you know, to me, the real fog in this whole thing is why, there's no clear definition of what affects the form of government to me. I don't see, I mean, how do, you know, which section there actually changes the form or affects that form. Some things clearly may not, others are not so, it's not so clear that they don't. You know, I think that, you know, if indeed there were a challenge to this charter, then, you know, maybe we would find that. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
One of the things that I kind of picked up when I attended the first introduction to being on the council at the GMA meeting and stuff, was they had a weak mayor and a strong mayor. Two distinct animals there to deal with. As soon as you introduce a city manager, the the strong mayor, he manages everything. Once you turn that over to a city manager, then you usurp or take those powers that the strong mayor had and give it to him as the administrator. And that's what we have. We have this type. It isn't, it's referred to as a strong mayor, but we do have the city manager who is managing this aspect and all. That Mr. Rush is trying to do is say the administrative powers, that is it. And the form of government that I see that we operate under is strong mayor with city manager, and that makes that second move.
Just one last point. We're really not disagreeing is that the city set of powers. And we define what the mayor has under the city set of powers. Whatever is not defined is questionable as to who has it. So this paragraph, in my opinion, should define the executive function, which I think we all agree, the chief executive function, to the mayor, and the administrative powers that are not assigned specifically to the city manager. And you've covered every single base. And if the city manager has specified under his particular paragraph every single administrative power that there is, then we've covered all bases. But if there is one missing one, then it would give authority at that point to the mayor to handle that particular administrative power, but it would also give the authority here to recognize that there's a power that hasn't been defined and move it to the city manager, so should we decide.
I think, Mr. Dyer, one last comment. I have been apparently laboring under misapprehension for three years. I thought we had a council manager form of government, and in GMA, the council manager form of government says the city council, and our charter says that. Our charter says the governing body of this city shall be a city council, which is comprised of the mayor and six council members. And under that theory of government, we have legislative power. We have no administrative power, period. And that's the apprehension I've been laboring under. And that's what I think we need. If we need to change the charter, we need to be specific. That's all. And let's move this to the work session.
Go ahead. I also have been operating under the assumption that we have a council manager form of government because that's what the GMA attorney told us at the retreat at Morrokan.
There's theory and there's practice, I understand.
I have to find two cities in state got exactly the same kind of government. They all got a little different twist in how they operate. And that's what makes defining that line of form of government, how it may be affected, very, very difficult, I think. Okay. So we're moving now to the work session.
Does that mean you want me to prepare an ordinance?
Yes.
You go ahead and start considering.
Yes. Is that what we're authorized?
I'm sure an individual asked me to do it, so Mr. Rush is asking me to do it.
Mr. Cummins, you want to prepare too?
Your verdict?
Anybody else?
Well, I just think it shouldn't leave any, my point is, if you're going to do that, I don't think it should leave any loopholes.
Discussion of proposed amendment to Canton City Code 2-90, decorum. Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I'm not going to read all of this, but all I'm trying to do here is we have two meetings a month. One is the work session, one is the regular meeting. And at the work session, and our current status of decorum is that every question, every comment is directed to the mayor. And at the regular meeting, I think that's the way it should be. At the work session, where we're discussing objects, I think the approach of having us talk to the hand is sometimes it becomes a joke here. And all I'm suggesting is that we change the wording and the code so that at the work session, the speaker has to be recognized by the mayor, but we can ask questions of one another without having to direct the question directly to the mayor and pretend we're not talking to one another. That's all.
You know, when we, let me mention this, and then I'll, Mr. Cummins, I'll get to you. But when we first started this, first recommended we have a work session, we put a table right out there. We sat around the table with our work session. It was very clear it was a work session, somewhat removed from this real formal setting here. But we didn't take action at that. We did, I mean, we did, and we talked back and forth to everybody. That's what we did. And quite honestly, it worked pretty good. The GMA had a migrate back up here and changed a little bit, but it's kind of.
He hit the key word, and I think that's, that a person has a floor, and I hate this monologue approach where I have to listen to you when I'm directing a question to somebody else. And I know, and I think everybody else here hates it too. But I think the key word is question, that someone, some other council member may have an answer that I may want an answer to that question. We should be able to address that question, but it's an answer to that question. It's not a yielding of a floor and a return back to the original person. And then when that person has the floor, they may have a question. Otherwise, you're going to get eighteen people speaking, or not eighteen, but like, you know, all of us speaking.
Anyone else? Do you want to move that to work session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. City managers, I say, no, we're going now to the business and travel policy. That was council introduced, I guess.
Yeah, I got something, so, but next weekend is Mayor's Day Downtown, Downtown Plan. It's second largest event, or maybe the largest event, where council people and the mayor and city clerk will go down and we are educated. We take classes. Under the present travel policy, we can't go down and spend the night the night before. And I've talked to a few councilmen. I'm not going down the night before, but some are saying if we can't do that, I'm not going. Well, we need education. I'm going to recommend that we waive that for this coming weekend. But if you can't stay down there, you can, it's just too much, it's too much detail.
I just might add that historically, this has always been, the council people have always gone down and stated this new policy. In the old policy, it had a travel restriction continue with the presidents. Because not only is there education, but in classroom form, there's education in other meetings, there's interaction with other council people, there's lunches where we have noted speakers. I think on Monday, the governor always is there and some other people. So it's an important weekend for municipal officers.
I'll make the motion that we waive that travel policy.
A second. All right. Mr. Cummins, you have something else?
Just this discussion, when Mr. Bryan and I have discussed a concept that maybe we'll come forward with is that where we have a council budget currently, that maybe we would allocate a council member's individual budget. We had talked briefly about this. Travel or what business expenditures should be applied, and that may overcome what we're talking about. I don't think the intent of this policy was to prevent what is happening, and so therefore that's.
I realize the intent wasn't there, but this travel prevention policy is for kids, not for grown-up people like us.
Let me make one comment about this particular meeting that you're talking about, for sure. This is a meeting that begins on Saturday morning. Now, what Jack and I know and some of us have traditionally done is drive down Saturday morning. There's no traffic. Doesn't take long to get there. And quite honestly, I would drive back Saturday evening, drive back home. And then I would go down on Sunday, but I would stay Sunday night because of meetings on Monday. I didn't want to drive down on Monday morning through the traffic. But there's very little traffic on Saturday and Saturday morning and Sunday. So, you know, basically, the savings would be a hotel room for two nights. And that's what I've done. But I mean, I have no real objection if somebody wants to, you know, drive down on Friday night and spend the night, so that they don't have to get up and drive the next morning and be there at eight-thirty or nine o'clock.
But, Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that Mr. Wood and Mr. Bryan and myself were meeting with the New State of Georgia Economic Development. I think that's his title. Correct me if I'm wrong. Mr. Wood, Billy Peppers. We're going to meet with him late Friday afternoon.
Well, that's a different meeting, though.
That's a different meeting.
You can do that anyway. You don't have to change his policy and do that. That's okay. You don't have to change anything and do that.
That's two different meetings.
Right, it is.
So I can stay over and not break the policy. I don't want to get in the weeds on that. I'm just trying to say that during these type of meetings, you try to have other type of meetings that are not scheduled meetings, but unscheduled, where you learn, or you go into lobbying, or whatever.
Right. Okay. Anyone else? Motion, and we have a second. Okay. Motion, the second, was that we waive the travel policy for this, and I'm assuming that waives it in its entirety. Is that his case, or are we waiving only part of it? It's waived, then it's in entirety, then, there's the motion. All right. Those who favor six to five saying aye, opposed no, all members voting for the motion. All right, the next item, Mr. Bryan, meeting format.
Yes, sir. Just, I'll make this real quick. I hadn't initially said I was going to ask that we make this a voting item, but Mr. Cummins asked me to defer this to the next meeting, and I will because it does merit the discussion. And I don't really feel strongly one way or the other. This is just a suggestion, but any time the council is together in a forum, four or more of us, then in a public meeting, decisions can be made. I mean, the only other time we're together in a forum is at the executive session. We're not allowed to make decisions there. Therefore, and you back up and look at the minutes of these work sessions, not all of them, but the vast majority of them, we end up having to vote anyone on some issue or do a head nod or some kind of, everybody understands, but that's not really a vote. My suggestion is going to be that we at least consider just simplifying, streamlining things and just acknowledge that the two regular meetings, the two meetings that we have a month, the first Thursday, the third Thursday, both be regular meetings. Because we vote in a many way a lot of times. Sometimes we don't. And it's just, it sounds like a good idea. I was in favor of that to start with, but as a practical matter, it's just been, it's just a kind of a, the public doesn't really know if we're going to vote or not in the work session, because sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't. So at any rate, I'm not asking for a decision or anything here, just suggesting that, you know, we talk about that next time.
Yeah, Mr. Bryan and I talked about this, and he did say that he was going to bring it to the next meeting, and I think where we can give it a full discussion, and there may be a hybrid between what we're talking about or compromises. I do have to prefer the work session, voting session, but I also understand there are situations where you want to vote at a working session. For example, tonight, even though this is a voting session, had it been a work session, I don't know that any of us would have objected to voting for discussion acceptance of the sixty-three-dollar qualifying fine fee for council members because we don't have to allow really any time for public discussion for something of that miniscule in nature. So, but since you're ready to work in session, we open it for discussion.
Well, as you know, the original intent was not only to provide an interaction among the council members so that we all better understood the issues, and knowing in the atmosphere that we're not going to be forced to vote that night, we're going to try to ask questions, we're going to ask others, we're going to get input from everybody and try to understand what they are. That was probably the primary, what the issues were and what are possible solutions. And not being under the pressure of saying, okay, what am I going to do after listening to all this? I've got to vote right now. But knowing that you weren't going to vote, I think, opens it up for some really good discussion. And the secondary thing was to allow the public more time to see what's going on and also maybe better understood, understand those that want to, the issues at hand, and, you know, maybe if they choose to have additional input, at least know what's going on. That was the original intent, but, you know, I'm, it's a completely empty session. Okay. Anything else on that? If not, city manager report, I believe he provided us with something. You have anything other than what you provided in the bag?
Black eyes might be forming on the bridge.
Okay.
I have two questions of the city manager, if I might.
Sure.
First question was, and again, I don't know what the process is, are you preparing an amendment for what we voted on, the pension relative to the council members, the GMA, or what, where did that go? Because don't we have to make an amendment?
Because don't we have to make an amendment? We have requested it.
Oh, we're requested, okay. And then the second one, do we have any update on the architect relative to the sanctuary?
Not a formal update. The architect has made several visits to the room and has interviewed in particular the court personnel. Mr. Barris, for in fact, asked me a similar question before this meeting. I don't have a specific update or report from him. Okay. Thank you. That was, okay. We'll be talking about a lot of things that we have, we have talked about before, looking at some of the progress, some of the lack of progress that we've made in 2012, you know. So, talking about where we go from here. So, and, and there'd be quite a number of other issues that we'll be talking about between now and the next meeting, but the next meeting will be a work session, so we have a full three weeks between now and. Okay.
Yes. The, the item that in the past years that you've had under the mayor's record was about the committees and the authorities and lists.
Yeah.
And I know that you have been busy, and you have not had the opportunity and time to digest all of that. Council has been also working with Reckon Day.
Not to hold off until you bring it forward, and then we will have to make our decision. But I just want them to know, I want them to know that we are very interested in them stepping forward and saying, yes, I would love to be on a committee, yes, I'd love to be involved in the city. So, that would be the only thing I just wanted to say. January didn't work out for us, because we've had a lot on our plate, you've had a lot on your plate.
And? They may not realize in this statement of these, of the selected, or the proposed nominations that have come out, council, there is some proposed nominations for the DDA, and there was the assumption that there were three expired terms, the way I read it anyway, that there were three expired terms. But we did vote in November to extend, I believe, three.
Reappointed.
So, if you, you look at it, because we voted, I believe, Mr. Klein, Ms. Roach, and Mr. Chambers, was it not? And I think those three were voted in November to remain on the DDA, so, just so you know that when we do get to the discussion, and I say, wait, we can't be voted for.
The names, you, you said the DDA?
Yeah. Downtown Development.
And the names you named?
Are Roach.
Yeah, they were, they were reappointed.
They were reappointed. Whatever. So, one question.
Go ahead.
In the past every other year, we have done the citizen committees this meeting, so what we be doing at the next meeting?
If I have time to get to that between now and then, I'll be happy to do that.
Three weeks. Okay.
Thank you, Bill.